We'll call this meeting in the common council to order. Roll call, please.
Cross is absent. Roth?
Here.
Byer?
Here.
Peachey?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Brandl?
Here.
Lars?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we'll entertain public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so. We ask that you stand at the podium and introduce yourself and your name and address for the record, please. Chief?
Ron Wagner, Fire Chief. I'd like to just announce to the council tonight that each year, the State of Wisconsin Firefighters Association hosts an annual conference that'll be held in March of this year. As part of the State Firefighter Association Conference, they award a firefighter of the year award, and along with that, a couple of runner-up positions and other folks that may be nominated. A couple of years ago, I believe it was three, four years ago, I went through the nomination process for former Chief Powell, and John did get an honorable mention and recognition at that time. Have recently just gone through that same nomination process, and we were notified on Sunday at halftime of the game that Bruce Whitmore from our department has been selected as the first runner-up for the State of Wisconsin firefighter of the year. So Bruce will be recognized at the State Firefighter Association Conference in March up in Stevens Point, along with his wife and any of his family that wishes to attend, and along with any city officials that would like to attend the banquet, and other firefighters that will be there to support Bruce and recognize his accomplishments as well. So just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, Chief, and our congratulations to Bruce. Recognition well deserved. There being no other public input, I'd like to introduce our Jefferson Television Station Manager, Dave Gruman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I just wanted to give a brief review of what's happened on the cable channels the past year. So during 2014, Jefferson TV showed more than 12,000 episodes, which equaled more than 6,000 hours of programming on Channel 987 on Charter Cable. This means the channel had programming on it 70% of the time. Programs are normally scheduled between 9:00 AM and 2:00 AM, seven days a week. When there's no programming on the channel, we have a community bulletin board of community announcements and city information, which usually is updated weekly. Jefferson TV, which, or us here in the room, we produced 77 local programs last year that included city and county government meetings, rotary concerts, sports, parades, and community events. In addition to scheduling the programming on the cable channel, I also post all the programming online, which is on Vimeo. But as of June of last year, I purchased the domain name JeffersonTV.com and created a website for the channel, and that was allowed to make our programming more visible, because that way, when people search, there's just another place to find it. Since the website started in July of last year, we had over 1,300 page views by 273 unique visitors. You know, that's not a huge amount, but for a small community channel, you know, first six months is probably not too bad. In addition to viewing our programs on the website, visitors can also find our TV schedule and other information on the website. We also have a Facebook page, which has just under 200 likes, and usually that's where I post updates about programming or, you know, something I think the community might be interested in. And then, starting this year, I've created a YouTube channel to also post our programs. The advantage to YouTube is first of all, it's owned by Google, so it's much more likely that things will come up in searches on YouTube, and so it's more visible online. And another thing with YouTube, which I just did this past weekend, was it allows you to create annotations in your videos. So for instance, everyone's probably seen a video on YouTube where there'll be a text link that pops up in the video, and you can click on it to go somewhere else. So I can do that with any videos that we post. Lastly, with the station expenses and revenue. In 2014, we met our advertising and miscellaneous budget and raised just under $11,000. That was what we're budgeted to raise ourselves. And our expenses were less than what I budgeted for. So as a result, we had a surplus of approximately $8,000. This was due to two things. First, Bill White, who is a longtime employee, resigned about halfway through the year, and so far, I haven't found a replacement. So that salary is still not being expended. And then, second, I didn't make any major equipment purchases like in previous years. I wanted to create a surplus, because in the not-too-distant future, we're going to have to purchase a new playback system. Next year, our playback system will be 10 years old and will more than likely need to be replaced. I mean, it's operated since 2006. It's been on 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And actually, this past year, about, I think it was in August, it had a technical failure on a video card, so it was down for a week until it could be replaced. So that pretty much concludes my report. If anyone has any questions, you know, certainly feel free to ask me or email me. I encourage everyone to, you know, watch Channel 987 from time to time if you have Charter Cable, or check out our new website to see what's being posted online and on TV. Oh, by the way, the city council meetings, those are scheduled weekly, 6:00 PM every night. So I advertise that on the channel in between programs, along with county boards, a regular scheduled program, and a few other locally-produced programs.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dave.
Right, thank you.
Terrific job. Appreciate your work. I have one announcement. There is, I'd like to make everyone aware of the upcoming breakfast, All You Can Eat Breakfast on Sunday, February 15th, at the VFW from 8:00 AM till noon for the benefit of the cab rides, Jefferson cab rides for the elderly. Tickets are $6.00 in advance and $7.00 at the door. Kids five and under eat free. And tickets are available at all Jefferson financial institutions or Rivercrest Apartments. And hope that all of us can, that are available that day can make it down and support that worthwhile cause. It's really a unique program here in Jefferson, and it's a terrific program to help seniors get around. Next, we'll move on to, before we adjourn to the public hearing that's noticed in your agenda, I'm going to ask Tim for a brief explanation, please.
Right. You guys have all seen the movie Groundhog Day. It's pretty fitting. That's what we have here, because you did this exact same thing last week. But by way of a brief explanation, we received the wrong draft of ordinance from the DNR. So they have sent us out a new copy of the ordinance, and there are a few changes, but they're mostly housekeeping changes. For instance, the ordinance that we adopted had the wrong panel numbers on it, so that has since been corrected. So basically, we have to ask you to repeat the step that you took at the last meeting and re-adopt the proposed floodplain ordinance. Before we do that, we have to have a public hearing, and we would ask that you would consider suspending the rules and adopting it in its final second reading form, because I think there is a deadline. The state's asking us to get this back to them within a day or so. So that's what we're doing. There's no substantive changes to the ordinance. They were basically housekeeping, and as I say, the reason we're doing that is we adopted a different draft of the ordinance than the DNR wanted us to put in place.
Okay. With that, we will adjourn to a public hearing on the proposed amendment to amend and replace Chapter 286 of the Municipal Code of the City of Jefferson concerning the floodplain ordinance. I'll call this public hearing to order. City Administrator, please read the notice of public hearing.
Notice of Public Hearing, City of Jefferson, Proposed Amendment to City Code. Notice is hereby given that the Common Council of the City of Jefferson will hold a public hearing in the council chambers of the Jefferson City Hall, 317 South Main Street, Jefferson, Wisconsin, on 3/2/2015 at 7:00 PM to hear the following request to amend and replace Chapter 286 of the City Code concerning the floodplain ordinance. All interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing. This legal was published in the January 20 and January 27, 2015, issues of the Daily Union.
Thank you. At this time, is there any more to add as far as an explanation of the amendment? Okay. Any persons wishing to be heard may do so at this time. We ask that you please state your name, address, and reason for appearing. There being none, we'll close the public hearing and move on to Proposed Ordinance Number 1-15. Alderman, Brandl, please.
Honorable Mayor Upperman, fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson Proposed Ordinance 1-15, An Ordinance to Amend and Replace Chapter 286 of the City's Code Concerning the Floodplain Ordinance. Due to its length, 38 pages, in fact, we've all read it before, in lieu of reading the ordinance, a copy is on file for public inspection at the office of the city clerk. At this time, I move to waive the second reading of the corrected ordinance and move for passage.
It's been moved? It's your second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Horn. A discussion? There being none, it's been moved to waive the second reading and approve passage. All in favor signify by saying aye, as the clerk calls your name. No offense, you're opposed.
Roth?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
CNN News, thank you. Proposed Ordinance Number 2-15. Alderman Peachey, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Upperman, fellow council members, and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson Proposed Ordinance 2-15, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 33 of the City Code as it relates to the Municipal Court for the City of Jefferson. Section 33-1, there is hereby amended and established a municipal court under the provisions of Chapter 755 of the Wisconsin statutes to be designated as Municipal Court for the City of Jefferson, which consists solely of the City of Jefferson. Section 33-2, Municipal Judge, Such Court shall, under the jurisdiction of and presided over by a municipal judge, who shall be an attorney licensed to practice law in Wisconsin and who resides in the City of Jefferson. Such municipal judge shall be elected at large in the spring election for a term of four years commencing May 1, 2015. All candidates for the position of Municipal Judge shall be nominated by nomination papers as provided in Section 8.10 Wisconsin Statutes and selection at a primary election if such is held as provided in Section 8.11 of the Wisconsin Statutes. The Common Council of the City of Jefferson shall provide for a primary election in the event that more than two candidates file nomination papers for such position of Municipal Judge as provided in Section 8.11, Paren 1A, of the Wisconsin Statutes. And such primary election shall be held on the third Tuesday of February as provided in Section 5.02, Paren 22, Wisconsin Statutes. A, Election, the Municipal Court of the City of Jefferson shall see to compliance with Section 5.58, Paren 1C, 5.60, Paren 1, Paren B, and 2, and Section 7.10, Paren 1, Paren A, Section 7.60, Paren 4, Paren A, and Section 8.10, Paren 6, Paren A, of the Wisconsin Statutes to provide for the election of a municipal judge under Section 755.01, Paren 1, Wisconsin Statutes. B, The oath and bond, This judge shall, after election or appointment to fill a vacancy, take and file the official oath as prescribed in Section 757.02, Paren 1, of the Wisconsin Statutes, and at the same time, execute and file an official bond as recorded by statute. The judge shall not act until the oath and bond have been filed as required by Section 19.01, Paren 4, Paren C, of the Wisconsin Statutes, and the requirements of Section 755.03, Paren 2, Wisconsin Statutes have been complied with. Salary, The salary of the municipal judge shall be fixed by the Common Council of the City of Jefferson at $7,254 per year, which shall be in lieu of fees and costs. No salary shall be paid for any time during the term which such judge has not executed the official bond or official oath as required by Section 755.03 of the Wisconsin Statutes, and file pursuant to Section 19.01, Paren 4, Paren C, of the Wisconsin Statutes. Section 33.3, Jurisdiction, The municipal judge and municipal court shall have such jurisdiction as provided by Section 755.045 and 755.05 of the Wisconsin Statutes, and as otherwise provided by state law. Section 33.4, The Hours, The municipal court shall be open at its clearly signed municipal courtroom located at 425 Collins Road, Jefferson, Wisconsin, and at such times as determined by the municipal judge. Section 33.5, or Section 33-5, Forfeitures, The municipal judge may impose punishment and sentences as provided by Chapter 800 of the Wisconsin Statutes and as provided in the ordinance of the City of Jefferson. All forfeitures, fees, penalty assessments, and costs shall be paid to the treasurer of the City of Jefferson within seven days after receiving the money by the municipal judge or other court personnel. At the time of the payment, the municipal judge shall report to the treasurer the title of the action, the offense for which the forfeiture was imposed, and the total amount of the forfeitures, fees, penalty assessments, and costs, if any. Section 33-6, Contempt Procedure, Part A, The municipal judge may impose a sanction authorized under Section 800.12, Paren 2, Wisconsin Statutes for contempt of court as defined in Section 785.01, Paren 1, of the Wisconsin Statutes in accordance with the procedures under Section 785.03 of the Wisconsin Statutes. B, The municipal judge may impose a forfeiture for contempt under Section 800.12, Paren 1, of the Wisconsin Statutes in an amount not to exceed $200, or upon non-payment of the forfeiture and costs, fees, and surcharges imposed under Chapter 814, Wisconsin Statutes, a jail sentence not to exceed seven days. Section 33-7, Abolition, The municipal court hereby established may, by ordinance or by law, be abolished at the end of any term for which the judge has been elected or appointed, Wisconsin Statute 755.01, Paren 2. This is the first reading.
Thank you, Alderman Peachey. Next up is a discussion regarding the Town of Astleton Emergency Medical Service Agreement. Tim?
Sure. Ron and Sue are also here. We just wanted to briefly bring this matter to your attention and make a brief comment. I'll start by saying, and I did distribute this letter. We did receive a letter from Andy Griggs, the attorney representing the township in this matter, notifying the city essentially that at midnight on April 21st, that the town was canceling the existing contract under which the city provides EMS service to a portion of Astleton Township. I'm not sure that there's really anything to say, other than, but for something changing between now and April 21st, I think, you know, the city is indeed planning to discontinue service since our contract would be voided at that date. I did have a question from one of you regarding, you know, what, is there a financial consequence to this? And I would say it's pretty manageable in the sense that in 2014, I think total patient responses were about 19 to the portions of the township sections that the city provided service to. The total amount of financial compensation in the form of either patient billings or what the township would pay the city for service is about $15,000 a year. And generally speaking, I think last year, I think was the first year that calls for city EMS service, service wide exceeded 1,000. So I think they were about 1,030 for 2014. So, quite honestly, it's, you know, it's a pretty manageable financial impact, and as I really see it, it really has little bearing on the city's ability to provide service. And certainly, we don't envision any changes to staffing or equipment that would be in order. And the city still needs X amount of staff and X pieces of equipment to provide service, and I see really nothing changing in regard to that. The one comment I think probably Ron and I and Sue both have, and I have to tell you, it's a bit of a head-scratcher. I don't know how you could find this is in the better interest of public safety, since some of these very people are on the city's doorstep that we will no longer provide service to. And quite frankly, that, from a public safety standpoint, that decision doesn't make much sense to us. But I'm going to ask you, Ron, to elaborate a bit further.
Yeah, Tim, you'd asked that I bring maps along, and I believe maps have been handed out in some of your packets that Sue provided to Tim. I also just gave you a larger, or a second map, I'm sorry. Just so that we're clear on the area. The first map I want to refer you to is the City of Jefferson map that came in an email from Bill Pennell. If you would just turn your attention to the one that has all the little purple triangles
Thank you.
on that, on that front page. The back page of that is clear, but the one page has a bunch of purple triangles on it. That represents, if we're going from east to west, the center line there would be North Main Street, all the way out now, the former, or Business 26, also North Main. If we look at the bottom right-hand corner down here, this property would represent the north portion. Right here would represent the north portion of Maple Grove. So just a little bit north of Alderman Brandl's house, on the north end of the property line of Maple Grove, to the north, along the east side of Main, Business 26, all the way out to the auto auction, those addresses are Township of Astleton, which will then be serviced by Johnson's Creek. Continuing to move to the west, Watertown Avenue. Watertown Avenue also has a number of properties that would be highlighted in white. If you move up there along that next section, just west of the Highway 26 Main Street corridor, you'll see a couple of properties there that are not colored. They're in white. Those properties on North Watertown Avenue would also be in the Township of Astleton. For a point of reference for you, if you're familiar, there is a trailer home just across from Danny Vogel's house there. That would be where that would start. Continuing to move you west into North Riverview Heights. North Riverview Heights subdivision, if you recall, is commingled properties of Township of Astleton residents, along with City of Jefferson properties. Predominantly, Astleton Court is the white area that all of the properties are clustered there together. And then, if you move a little further west along Hildebrand Drive, you'll see there are a couple of properties there also that continue to be Township of Astleton properties. If we move west across the Rock River, just north of the fairgrounds, my south boundary would be Dale Gargert's new home, that new white home that was constructed there. That would be our north boundary. And all properties north of Dale's home would then also be Township of Astleton residents and would now be receiving ambulance services as of April 21st from Johnson's Creek. We also anticipate, based upon a letter that we received from Attorney Griggs, that it is anticipated that that will all also become Johnson's Creek Fire Territory January 1st of 2016. If I refer you then to the larger map that Sue just handed you, and I wanted to be ban on bringing big, big maps. The area that we're talking about beyond the city limits is this boundary here. If we take F&amp;J Town Line Road all the way across to the purple section, everything to the north, Sections 22, 26, 27, 28, 33, 34, 35. 35 is the section that encompasses North Riverview Heights, and Sections 36, 31, and 32 over to here. And this next section we pick up is Farmington over here. Basically, it takes us from County Y, straight across F&amp;J Town Line Road to Marsh Road. Everything north that is currently white shaded will now become Johnson's Creek EMS territory. And again, based on our information, their intent is to also change that to Johnson's Creek Fire Territory in '16. To answer, further answer your questions, Tim, I guess from a map perspective, does anybody have any additional questions on, on the maps and the areas that are affected by this? As Tim indicated, it really brings Johnson's Creek ambulance, initially after April 21st, pretty much down inside of the confines of the city limits of Jefferson, at the choosing of the township. Tim had asked me just operationally, you know, how I felt this impacted things. To his point, I really do believe that this seriously puts public safety for those people in the affected area at risk. But that is at the choosing of the elected officials in the Township of Astleton, and we respect their decision to make all those decisions. Right now, from a Jefferson Fire, Jefferson EMS, I will deal with the EMS side of things predominantly here.
Because that's what's noticed?
Yep. Right now, for the EMS side of things, as of April 21st, Jefferson EMS will no longer provide primary service coverage into those areas as first due or first-out coverage for those areas. The question's been asked, what does this mean for mutual aid and for people in that area? Jefferson EMS will continue to provide mutual aid, as we have in the past, into any areas if we have our first due ambulance available for service, that we're not out on another call with our first due, which is the situation that we have fairly much currently today. But again, we would not be providing primary response. That would become the responsibility of Johnson's Creek's. And if we have resources available to us and they request mutual aid, we would respond only if we have services available. One other concern for us, this does include the Highway 26 bypass all the way down to the substation on Spangler, or is that Spang, yeah, that's Spangler Road that goes across there is where the substation's at. Operationally, starting April 21st, that will be a joint response where Johnson's Creek EMS will be commingled with Jefferson Fire. How that changes things for us is currently, we have many members on our fire department that are licensed DMTs and are licensed under Jefferson EMS. So like the call we had out there this afternoon, into that area, we're able to provide patient care and patient contact with fire resources that are licensed DMTs under the service. When that changes, we will no longer be capable of providing patient care to those people because we will be restricted now by the licensure that the state holds for us, and it's nothing that we're not wanting to do. We're bound by the rules of law and regulation that are tied to our EMS licenses. So the fire folks will not be able to have patient care, patient contact, like we are currently. We will provide fire suppression services, and we will provide extrication.
So if a person's dying, you're not going to save them?
No, I'm just saying, Jim, that we have restrictions within our license of that we- No, I'm just saying, Jim, that we have restrictions within our license of that we can't be having primary patient care. Obviously, we're allowed things like our, you know, AED, public access, that type of stuff. We're able to do those things as the Good Samaritan still attached, but we also, when we start doing additional things in terms of patient mobilization and patient care, we're not allowed to operate outside of what our license and licensure tells us that we can do. We're bound by the state's, the state guidance on that. So, obviously, we're never putting anybody's, you know, life at risk, but we do have issues of what we can or can't do in terms of patient care from a licensure standpoint for that individual providing that care. So, again, that pretty much covers it. I mean, it just changes things operationally for us, you know, I would say a little bit to your point, Jim, you know, obviously, we have to just be cautious, the individuals that are doing patient care, that they're not exceeding the rules of their license. And again, right now for us, we don't even have to think about those things because we're currently commingled and licensed under one another. So, any other questions for us?
Thank you, Ron.
How many, do you expect to be called a lot by Creek as a backup? I mean, how many ambulances do they have?
I honestly can't answer that question, you know, Peg. Right now, in that territory that we're talking about, we had 19 patient contacts in 2014. That isn't necessarily 19 individual calls, because we do have a couple incidents in there where there were vehicle accidents, so we had multiple patients on one call. But the way we're required to record things, it's by patient contact. So, 19 patient contacts. I honestly can't tell you. Everything is dependent upon Johnson's Creek's ability to respond, and we'll find out.
That's their decision to call you for mutual aid, right? They necessarily could call another?
Correct, that would be their decision to contact or to call us. And again, the, the understanding for mutual aid is just that, it is mutual aid when your resources are at capacity or stressed. So, it's not to be a replacement for primary aid, that's not the way that mutual aid is structured. So, it means that Johnson's Creek is, their resources are depleted and they're calling for help. It's not a matter of we've overextended ourselves in terms of service area, can you please come do this? That's not the way that mutual aid is structured.
Right, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
I think, Ron, it's, it's safe to say, you know, we'll honor to the best we can our mutual aid commitments, but the city doesn't intend to be a primary first responder after April 21st for EMS service.
No, it can't be based on the township's choice.
So, the, the last thing I would just mention is, since there's been, I guess, increased media attention to this, primarily in the daily union, folks like Sue, Ron, and Tim, you know, have started getting a lot of telephone calls from township residents asking really, what does this mean? And I can tell you, I think there's a lot of folks that just aren't aware of what's happening. We do our best to try to answer any inquiry, but at the end of the day, and for the most part, I think we just refer those folks to their town board chairperson. And I do think in the relatively near future, you know, our intent is to send out a letter to the residents or businesses in those areas served, just advising that after April 21st, we won't provide EMS service anymore, and that any question or inquiry they have, they should direct to their township representatives.
Thanks, Tim. I think we should clarify that there has been some different information that's, that's come out over the past, oh, we'll say, month or so, and that's not because the initial information was incorrect, but because the township has changed their position? Is that fair to say? That they, they had initially given notice that they were going to discontinue service in certain quadrants here, and then since that time, they have increased that to all the areas that are served by the City of Jefferson. I should also note that in the letter that you got here, I just got, I received this on the 30th. I had received that earlier, and they had referenced the date as April 1st, so you may have read or seen that at, at one point, that they wanted to discontinue service by April 1st. Attorney Brandmeyer pointed out correctly so that, given their 120 days notice, that the first available option was April 21st. So, that is why the, that's data's reference right now. Chief, I got a question, does Johnson Creek have an aerial truck? Okay. All right, so, if there's a call, like, and, so if they take the ethanol plant out of our service area, they're going to serve that how?
We're on EMS without any fire.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Thanks for pointing that out.
I guess, Dale, I would like to just clarify, because when you and the EMS committee met a couple of weeks ago, two sessions ago, you discussed this, and to Dale's point, we shared with you the information we had. Sue and I had not had any correspondence with anybody on this, from either the township, Johnson's Creek Fire, or EMS. All the communication has been between Attorney Griggs and Attorney Brandmeyer, and we've gotten those letters emailed to us from the mayor and from Ben, Tim, so we've not had any dialogue or interaction with anyone since we've had the deal.
What makes this such a big issue? I know we've had quite a few meetings on it. If Aslan doesn't want our services, I mean, that's their prerogative, right? I mean, there's nothing we can do about it. Okay, so I'm, I'm just, we've had three, what, three meetings on this so far, and I don't know what we can say or do. I mean, you're preaching to the choir, we need to be preaching to Aslan, not us, about the, the problems with it.
But I think, frankly, we are, we need to preach to the people who think they're living in Jefferson and think they're probably served by Jefferson, who aren't going to be served by Jefferson anymore. Their next, our neighbor will be. So, if you have a heart attack or a stroke or something, think Jefferson's going to service you, but that's not true anymore, where, is the guy across the street is.
Right.
That's, that's going to be confusing, I would think, and, and people need to, and I don't know that that's our job, maybe that's Aslan's job, they're going to have to make sure their, the people that they're servicing understand that now that it's going to be, you know, it's not going to be Jefferson doing it, so.
Tim had mentioned, you know, sending out the letters and informing them, but I mean, it's an eye-opening situation for those citizens of Aslan to find this out, but I don't know what, we can do anything different about it.
No.
Yeah, so.
No, I think at this point, our, our, maybe something that we can do about it is to inform those people that are our neighbors, that are in, excuse me, technically in the Town of Aslan, but practically speaking, in the City of Jefferson, like the ones that Ron referenced in the, in the Riverview Heights neighborhood, and many others. I mean, we, we've already heard from people that are in the township but have been served by Jefferson Public Services and would like to continue to be served by Jefferson Public Service. And they're asking Tim and, and others, what, what are their options? And their options at this point are to try to convince their elected representatives to reconsider this, which I think would be a very wise move. But at this point, our, our response is, this is what has been presented to us.
Right.
We're still going to have a fire department, we're still going to have a first-rate EMS department, with or without the Town of Aslan. It's unfortunate the decisions that are being made, and it's, I think that's about the, all I'm going to say about it at this time. It, it shows little regard for public safety in some cases.
That's what I think. I think they're fiscal decisions that they're making, and they're jeopardizing the safety of their constituents. That's my opinion.
I'll put, is there anyone else have any comments? And I'm sure we haven't had the last discussion on this. Guarantee it. Next, we'll move on to Resolution Number 100, the Consent Agenda. Alderwoman, Byer, please. Thank you, Chief, and Sue.
Honorable Mayor, councilpersons, and citizens, City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 100. Be it resolved by the Common Council of City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for February 3, 2015, is hereby adopted. The consent agenda for tonight includes vouchers payable for December 2014 in the amounts of $29,313, and for January 2015 in the amounts of $36,646, and payroll summary for January 23, 2015, in the amounts of $140,097. Council minutes from January 20, 2015, minutes, meetings of the Common Council, licenses as approved by the Regulatory Committee. We had operators license, we had John Featherston, who are Jefferson Golf, we had Andrea Perez for the Brick House, Mitch Shenke for Rock Bottom, and Abigail Tresscher, and Christina Wagner, both for the Brick House. And we had a beer and wine license for St. Francis of Assisi Catholic Community for the Piner Room, February 13, 13th, it's for a fundraiser, and they're having dueling pianos. I would so move.
It's been moved, sir, second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Miller. Any discussion? Additions or corrections? There being none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye, as the clerk calls your name, no if you're opposed.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Roeth?
Aye.
Thank you.
At this time, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Section 19.85, Paren 1E, of the Wisconsin State statutes, to discuss deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified business relating to TID, Number 7, a business prospect.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Peachey, second by Mr. Brandle. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, so, I'm sorry, on a, on a roll call. I apologize.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandle?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Roeth?
Aye.